Mr. Chairman, we are live.
Okay, welcome everybody. Today is December 27th, Tuesday. This is our weekly county commissioner meeting. This time I please ask everyone to rise and say the pledge. Rita, would you mind leading us?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks Rita for doing that.
Mm-hmm. There's an unfamiliar face.
I don't know about cowboys. We'll see. Welcome. Have a seat.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
This time everybody's had a chance to look at the agenda. Is there any additions or corrections? If not, I entertain a motion to approve.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the December 27th agenda as submitted.
I'll second. Move to second all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. We'll get right on into the agenda. Our next one is an action item. These are claims, board orders, and junior college. And I guess the only question I had Rita was on the medical for jail. Are we all caught up on that yet?
Mr. Chairman, that's a conversation that I have not had the opportunity to talk with the lieutenant, but my understanding that this payment to the hospital will satisfy all of us or all of the payments that we were in arrears. So this will get us caught up is my understanding.
Summer of '21, summer of '22.
We do have one that we're still working with St. Luke's on, but that's going to be a process in negotiating with St. Luke's. But my understanding for this bill for Cascade Medical, this is, will get us caught up.
And then we're billing the state inmates that cost, correct?
My understanding is, I'd like to get clarification from the lieutenant if they are billing Cascade directly or if we are paying it and then getting reimbursed from the state. That is another matter that I need to clarify with the lieutenant.
I think we pay it and then we get reimbursed.
I do believe that that's the case.
But I've talked to Cascade and apparently some of this stuff was going to the lieutenant's spam or junk mail and they were getting it and they didn't know it was there. Some kind of miscue electronically, but hopefully this will catch us all up.
They may not have known about the focused emails. Some of them are specific and they go to two different directions. You don't see all your emails at one time.
Then the other question I had Rita was the Guardian RFIDs. They're almost 12,000. Is that these things?
No, that is something similar to the IDs, but it's specifically for the jailers.
Oh, for jail.
And that, yeah, it's a system specifically for the jailers in monitoring the inmates as well as medications.
That's the new system.
That is correct.
Do you know, is that going to be monthly or is that annually?
My understanding is that is an-
It's a two-year.
It's an annual cost. And we do get-
A two-year cost, you think Rita?
Um, let me see if I can find. I think we have that in here.
Because that would be-
I could be incorrect, obviously. No, it's not.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, we also get reimbursed 50%, I believe, from Idaho Association of Counties for that. So we are, we will be submitting reimbursement for that as well.
You guys jump in here with your questions anytime you want.
I was going to have you correct one on my travel. It's not housing, it's registration for NACO, the 620. And then Sue, my other question for you is, are we about done with scanning? So is this like maybe the last bill?
Yeah, so actually I got the final bill late last week. So I called Chris and said, we still have a couple Strangler boxes that we were going to get at the end. He says, oh, that's right. So they're going to come grab those Thursday of this week. And I said, I don't need to know everybody. Make sure you get all your sheets in there because this is it. So I suspect I'll get the final bill next week. But I've got one of my guests that I got to turn in to Rita later today.
Okay, do we come in approximately where-
We're still under.
We're under. Awesome, awesome news. Those are the only questions I had.
Rita, the new Jeep Cherokee, it's actually a 2020. Is that for sheriffs?
No, that is, that's for motor pools. That will replace the Durango.
Okay.
The Durango will be, I believe, auctioned this year, Mr. Chairman.
The blue one?
The white one.
Oh, the white one, okay.
And this one, that's my understanding, but I'd like Jeff to comment on that.
Oh, tried to remember to ask him.
Is that for buildings?
Uh-uh, no, it's motor pool.
Just the general one?
Um, I guess I can wait. I'll talk to Scott when he comes in on that. And we had no junior college, right?
Not this time.
The board orders. Okay, if everybody's good, I'd entertain a motion to approve the claims and board orders. Mr. Chairman, I make the motion of claim that we approve claims.
I'll second that.
Move to second all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
I have to get organized for today. Now we're going to come in.
Why should you be different?
According to my husband, anyway.
Leave Fred out of that.
He never listens. I can say whatever. The ghost. Did you guys hear the windstorm last night? I actually was told about it. I must have been tired. My window was even open. I do remember having a dream about kids' car racing. So I've decided that that must have been the wind blowing through the trees that I was listening to. I was going, who in the world's playing video games like with cars or something?
Get ready for the blowouts and the slides.
I came through that avalanche zone yesterday while it was raining. Scott, oh, this could be interesting.
Good grief Rita, you got lots of papers in there, you know?
I have just the rest of them all taken care of.
Okay, we're going to move, thanks Rita, have a good day. We're going to move on down to our next agenda item. These are elected official reports. And the first one up to be Sue.
Good morning. I have cancellation number 19 before you today for the 2022 assessment year for Kevin and Tammy Hayner. So Anthony had spoke to Tammy in our office early in June of 2022. The subject parcel is very low and wet. He lowered the grade and applied a negative adjustment for the low and wet issues. The new value did not get post and certified for the 2022. In other words, he didn't get an amended notice. And so they brought it to our attention and I talked to her last week and the changes were already done in ProVal. They just didn't get posted and certified. So I have the changes on here. So I'm asking that you cancel 146,923 in value, please.
Sue, how many acres is this? Didn't show an acre on it. Apparently some of it is good and some of it's not good.
I don't think that they can get a permit. We just don't have a, we don't have anything from Central District Health, but it's 2.8 acres. And it is on the field list to go scrutinize.
So did they just pay taxes on this? How does, how do their taxes adjust after the tax was already due?
It'll always come off the second half is what I tell folks.
Okay.
Because then they'll be like, well, I have this tax bill. Should I wait to pay it? And I said, no, please pay your first half so you don't get interest or penalties because it's a process that goes through, you know, between us and the clerk and the treasurer.
Okay.
And so I always encourage them to pay their first half on time.
Okay.
Okay, so I move to approve-
I would move to approve the assessor's request for cancellation of value number 19.
I'll second that. Move to second all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Is that, is that expected to kind of stay the status? Or is that kind of up for reconsideration?
That's why I said it's on the field list to go scrutinize and really see the, because right now it's pointless. But, you know, come July, let's see what it looks like.
Does it significantly change?
No, I know.
Or may it be sweat?
Right.
Because 37 each, is that a improvement on that?
That's an improvement, yes. I think it's a yurt.
Little shit or something, okay. Hey, anything else you need to let us know?
I don't think so.
That's it?
I guess, I hope.
Okay, any questions for Sue?
Everybody healthy?
So far.
Okay, good.
All right, thanks Sue.
Those who weren't, almost all are now.
Okay, good.
Have a good day, Greg.
Mr. Miller.
Good morning Commissioners.
Good morning Douglas.
Since we have kind of a light attendance, I'd like to maybe take 10 minutes today, if you don't mind, on behalf of the clerk's office.
Sure.
If you guys need to interrupt me or shut me down, don't hesitate. Just let me know. But I wanted to give you a kind of a clear overview of what we're working on right now. So just to begin, as you are fully aware, we're in the midst of the master facility plan and comprehensive financial plan with Clearwater Financial. We're, I guess, diving right into it. Myself and Johanna have basically weekly phone calls with Clearwater Financial to give us a progress of where we're at. I can let you know that we do have some initial blueprints of some ideas. Approximately five options have been presented to Johanna and myself. Johanna has been busy with the tax drive. I've been busy and we haven't had an opportunity, just her and I, to sit down and come up with some additional ideas. But that will be presented to the Commissioners in the very near future. But I can let you know that we do have five potential options at this point in time regarding the master facility plan. So that's exciting news.
Are you going to bring all of those to us? Are you planning on weeding through that?
We're bringing them all to you with potential additions, with additional ideas that we have. So you will be getting all of the five plus a few more.
Doug, is that just this facility here? Is that the fairgrounds?
That's just this facility here. That's correct.
The campus here.
The campus, yep. So we have five options for the campus as of right now that they have just presented to us. Real initially, or real, just a brief presentation that we have not had the time to break down and provide additional ideas. But the Commissioners will have the opportunity to do that. I just wanted to make sure that the Commissioners were aware of where we were within that progress of our comprehensive financial plan as well as the master facilities plan. Right now, all that's really been discussed is the master facility plan. We haven't really dived into the comprehensive financial plan just yet. But we are working diligently and regularly with Clearwater Financial.
I'm kind of assuming that additional ideas and thoughts are based kind of, at least loosely, on the conversations that we've had in the house.
Yes, sir. Commissioner Allen, that's very accurate. Everything that they have designed was based on the interviews that they have conducted. We've also completed all of the interviews with the stakeholders. Some great conversations came up with the conversations that we had with the stakeholders regarding ideas. As the Commissioners are fully aware, one of the main topics is workforce housing. That is on a lot of the stakeholders' minds, how to address that. So it's a lot of the same topics that were being discussed. So I do want to let you know that the stakeholders, part of the process has been completed. We are also transitioning to a new financial software, Tyler Financial, and a recording product. So this is involving our office on a regular basis as well as the Treasurer's Office, as well as the Building Department. So we are about a month into our transition to Tyler. Our go-live date is projected to be in 2024. So this is going to be a year-long process, Commissioners, but we are excited that we are advancing our technology on the clerk's side, on the treasurer's side, and the building side. This is going to be a better product. It's going to be able to provide a better service to the, to our constituents. So we're really excited, but we do have a long year ahead of us, a lot of hard work ahead of us. But we are excited that we are finally transitioning to a new software.
Doug, is there a payroll module as part of that? And we have-
So we're looking at, we're looking at, there is a payroll module. There is a different time moto or a tracking system. But yes, there is a different payroll time collecting system that we will be transitioning to and eliminating time moto from our software that we currently have.
It's one of the biggest things I think we've heard about is time cards and the fact that we end up paying people if they leave us before the end of the pay period. And so I'm just curious about that.
There is a different module.
Doug, do you know, is it tied into these things or is it-
No, that is completely different.
These are just entrance on?
That's correct, entrance into your offices. So that's, that's kind of giving you a brief, a brief overview of our transition to our financial and recording software. We're real excited, but it's going to be a lot of work. Staff is buckling down and prepared. We're conducting basically bi-weekly meetings with Tyler. We have homework assignments that we're assigned to and there are steps that we have to complete before our next meeting. So we are working on that on a regular basis. So I just want to make sure that the Commissioners are aware of that transition in our office too.
But one more question on that. I know we're going to transition to new desktops. Jeremy has, is that going to be-
Yep, got some exciting news. The clerk's office has all new computers, all new. Our office, I believe, was the first for the new computer rollout. So we have been rolled out, I think, four new workstations. We are located in new areas. Rita is stationed. We've kind of done some reorganization as well, but we were trying to coordinate this with the work, the rollout of the new computers. So yes, the clerk's office has had the workstations, transitioned to new workstations. Other departments will be next.
Awesome. And Nicole has been doing a fabulous job. You guys did a great job.
Yep, excited for our new deputy recorder. You'll be meeting in person, Mackenzie Castor, today, our grant writer. We're fully staffed. We're feeling good about our office.
And Mackenzie has a spot too?
She does. Yep, she's in the office two days a week, but she does when she's in the office.
She'll be in this afternoon.
She's here today. Magistrate commission that I'm involved with, as Chairman Hasbrook is aware, we're selecting one magistrate judge for Elmore County. And then we have two more to select for Ada County. That does involve a lot of interviews with the applicants, reviewing all of the packets. So that's something that I'm also involved with as well as Chairman Hasbrook. But that is, we do have a busy season. I guess where I'm getting at with this, we do have an upcoming busy season for selection of magistrate judges for Elmore County and then two more for Ada County. Just want to let the Commissioners aware of that.
Maybe we get ours?
We're going to make that part of the process.
Yes.
Yeah. This is district name?
Ada County.
Correct, yeah. It's district four.
And what are we like, what is, what is the status in Valley County then?
So Valley County has our magistrate judge.
That's all, we're good.
We're good, yep. And he was reappointed on the last election, on the November election. He was on the ballot to determine if the general public wanted to retain him for another four years. So his, he will be in our, as our magistrate for the next four years.
You've just been giving a lot of time to Ada Counties.
Yeah.
If they get-
But yes, that's another topic. We, that's a tough conversation to have at this point in time. I don't know if the Commissioners were aware. I am the vice president of the Idaho Association of Counties Clerks. So I am the vice chair, so I do sit on the executive committee. The executive committee right now is making committee assignments for all of the elected clerks. So I've spent, been spending the past week on working with our election committee on selecting clerks to be assigned to committees. So again, it takes a lot of time, but it's important. I am the chair of the Idaho State Tax Commission Committee. So that will be taking a lot of my time as well. We do have a few cleanups that we need to do with the Idaho State Tax Commission. So we will be, I personally will be working really closely with the Idaho State Tax Commission the up, in this upcoming year to address some legislation, to address some of the public defense reimbursement requirement. But I don't know if the Commissioners were aware, I am the vice president of the executive committee. Will be the president next year. It's an honor to be selected, to be observed by my fellow elected officials and then selected as the secretary vice chair. We work up our ranks. But this year I'm the vice president and those are some of the things that we are working on right now is selection of the committees for the elected clerks.
I'm on the legislative committee too, so you and I can work together.
Great.
Yeah, that's awesome.
It's really an admirable position to be in.
Thank you Commissioner Allen, appreciate that. And thank you other Commissioners.
How does that, you anticipate any fallout from the local standpoint of your position as clerk and our, pretty much our scheduler and manager, that kind of thing?
It won't have an impact at all.
Gabby's the brain anyway.
Yeah, you start getting it.
I make sure that we delegate. We have Gabby. I think we're going to get Nicole involved with more of the Commissioners' agenda. So we do have a plan to make sure that the needs of the Commissioners is still met. But I do appreciate your question and understand your question to make sure that I am not spread too thin. This next year is going to be a test. It's going to be extremely busy for the clerk's office. But we do have plans in place to prepare for the unexpected.
Right.
Are there a lot of new clerks?
There are.
Yeah.
I think we had 15 new clerks.
Wow.
That will be starting and that's very unusual.
Third of the counties.
Yes, there's quite a few new clerks.
Like a third of the legislature's new?
Commissioners, as you're fully aware, we have our IAC conference. I'm also preparing for that with the executive committee, just our agendas and things of that nature and working with the IAC board to make sure that we have our agendas set. So that is taking a lot of time. But if you have not registered for the IAC conference, this is probably one of the best ones, as all of the Commissioners are aware. And Commissioner Thompson is going to be attending. Hopefully this is one of the best conferences to attend with IAC as the midwinter legislative conference. So excited for that. Unfortunately, I do have a conference that's going to be a conflict for selection of the Elmore magistrate and that is the Elections Conference. I have an Elections Conference that I will be attending with Elections Coordinator Rich Robinson from January 4th through January 6th. But we're excited. This is our first conference with our new Secretary of State. He's not officially the Secretary of State yet, but Phil McGrane, our Secretary of State-elect, will be in attendance. And this will be our first year with the change in leadership at the Secretary of State's office. We are excited about that, but we do have basically a four-day intense election conference that I will be attending with Rich Robinson.
Are you going to zoom on magistrate? Are you going to try and zoom in?
I'm going to try to zoom in if I have a break is what I'm going to do. Last, we finally, I think I shared this with the Commissioners. We thought we had a date for our outside audit. We have secured a date for our outside audit to be conducted in February. And so that has been scheduled. So I just wanted to make sure to let the Commissioners know that that officially has been scheduled to conduct our outside audit. They're going to do fair at the same time as well. Commissioners, I think I took up 10 times, I do have, 10 minutes of my time. I do have one action item that I would like to present to the Commissioners and I do think that this will be a benefit for all involved. But we would like to request the use of the old recreation office, the old jury office, the old storage room to be returned to the clerk's office to be utilized for file storage until we can verify that they have officially been scanned into our Odyssey system. Currently, those files are being stored at the shed. The, and we are going to be requesting that buildings and grounds or facilities move those at their convenience to this recreation office. And then that would allow the usage of that building for equipment.
Let's still never call this an office again. Let's just call it a storage room.
Storage. So I guess to-
That closet has been-
Not belabor this any longer. We are respectfully asking the storage area be returned to the clerk's office for file storage until we can clear them out. We are, our goal is to eliminate all of those files that we have, but we need to double, triple verify that they have been scanned in. And then that would open up that storage building for facilities, equipment that they could use in the future is what our proposal would be.
I've not, I've not heard anybody else clamoring for that facility.
At office.
For that closet?
Yeah, I would, I would, I think a motion that we honor that request how that returned to the clerk's office, Mr. Chairman.
Second, third, and fourth.
Move to second all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Is it going to fit Doug?
We believe so. And we're not going to make anything, we're not going to have them build anything permanent. It's all going to be temporary. For those of you that have been around, we did have permanent file shelf, bookshelves in there. We're not going to have that. We're going to have to just develop some sort of temporary structure. I do feel that we can get it accomplished about it within a year and a half. I know that sounds long, but it-
Having this-
But having it onsite is going to help. So we don't have to walk over there.
That closet is also available in that lower office. Yeah, where needed, so.
At this point in time, we won't need that. We're just going to need, but we're excited. And then buildings can have an area, the facilities can have an area to store their equipment, which will be nice. Commissioners, again, I've taken up way more than my allotted five minutes, but I did want to just, since we were, didn't have everyone in attendance today, I wanted to take a little extra time to give you guys a clear overview of what the clerk's office was working on, will continue to work on. And that's all I have.
All right. Any questions for Doug? Nope, we're good.
Thank you.
Okay, next victim is Mr. Oki. Good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman. Doug, I'm grateful that you took a little extra time because I needed a little extra time this morning. I'm still the designated chauffeur at our house and so I had to go north and then, and then south again. As far as that goes, that's, that's going really well. Just a little soggy and slick outside, so not the best conditions for someone that's hobbling around a little bit after surgery. But at any rate, since this is the last, the last prosecutor's report for the year, I thought I'd give you a little bit of a recap of some of the things that we focused on. I'm really not here to talk about the criminal accomplishments, although I do think they had some significant ones and noteworthy ones that Brian can, can brief you on when, when he's able to do that. But on the civil side, we focused on a couple of, a couple of things that were aimed at minimizing exposure to liability for the county. I spent a lot of time looking at reviewing, working with department heads and elected officials on contracts and agreements that we are signing and renewing and trying to modify those to the benefit of the county. I think that there's been some growing pains related to that. And because of that, I think what I will focus on as it relates to contracts and agreements is first training session and maybe there will be multiple meetings. But we'll focus on some training and some roundtable discussions on contracts, some of the things that I'm seeing that I want everybody to be aware of and be paying attention to. So my goal is at least once a month, but maybe more if needed, to schedule this room and invite- and invite as many department heads and elected officials to come as we can. I've found that if we can get, if we can get as many people as possible in the room together, we can troubleshoot things. If things are not moving as fast as they need to be, or adjustments need to be made, that's a good platform for that to get done. So in January, I'm going to schedule what I'll call kind of like a brown bag lunch discussion, we can schedule around the noon hour, and I would really appreciate and like to invite you as the commissioners to attend that discussion as well, because it's critically important that we get your input. Ultimately, it's your signature on these agreements, and we want to make sure that the contracts that we're negotiating meet your expectations, and we're doing it the way that you expect and want it to be done, so.
Brian, if we do that, do we have to do a work?
Sure, and that.
We'll have to post it and everything as a regular?
Certainly, yes, yes, absolutely. If we have a commitment for at least a quorum of board members, then yes, we will publish a notice, and there's no reason not to, I mean, I'm certainly comfortable with that. If members of the public want to sit in and observe a work session related to a certain topic, that certainly is fine with me. If there's a reason that attorney-client privilege, then we'll do that separately, but as far as the day-to-day workflow from the county, then certainly, we can do that. We are similar to the clerk's office, we're standing up a software program, should go live later this year. It's quite a process, and much like the clerks described to you, there's weekly interactions with the company, we have homework assignments to do, but the idea is to transition from primarily paper system to an electronic system to improve efficiencies, and we're all excited for that, we think that'll make things a lot easier for, it's primarily built for the criminal side, that's a very paper-heavy, document-driven system, but there will be a method for my, for the work that I do as well. In addition to that, we did get kind of this interim program set up internally for requests for legal advice, I think that's worked really well. The challenge is that, the challenge is just keeping up with the requests, and, but at least it's logged into the system, I've got a way to access that, and I can look and see what is there. I think if things fall through the cracks, it's because for one reason or another, it didn't get inputted into that request for legal advice database that we created, so for department heads, I encourage them, and I think for the most part, everybody's been really good at complying with the request, to kind of work through Kathleen, she's helped me just keep track of things. I know that certainly I'd like, I'd like for things to be turned around quicker, and I know that there's some things that have been out there for a while, that's, you know, that's really two parts. First part is workload, workload is pretty heavy on the civil side, and secondly though, it's because there are certain projects that require some time and attention be invested in them, and I don't want to just blow through things so fast that I don't do an adequate job and do a good job for the county. So I am trying to take my time on some things that I think need a little bit more time and attention.
The software that you guys are implementing, is that something that's coming from the state? I mean, will it interact with the state processes, or this is just totally Valley County?
This is, well, so Prosecutor by CarpeL is a proprietary software program, but it's designed for prosecutors, and it will communicate with other counties that have Prosecutor by CarpeL, and I believe there are, I think there's, there's a handful, six or seven or eight counties, the good thing is, there are counties that are similar to ours, Ada has their own software, they're a big county, I think they built their own, but I know Laeta, Gem County, and there's a couple others, I'm not going to remember all of them, that have, they're actually ahead of us, and they're up and running, so there'll be good resources for us to, you know, troubleshoot issues with the new system, but we can also, we can share forums, we can communicate in, through databases and that, so the more counties that sign up for the same software, the bigger network we are developing.
What about Odyssey, will it work with Odyssey pretty well?
Yes, yep, that's the, that's kind of the reason that it's taken so much time, is that they basically will upload what we're currently using, modify it to work in their system.
Their system.
Yeah, yep, so we don't have to abandon what we have already used and have been using, so. But anyway, it's been, it's been, it's been a really busy year, I look forward to another productive, beneficial year, I really am committed to these work sessions where we can get, we can get folks here in the room and talking amongst each other and working on things, there's some, just some key things that I think everybody could benefit from, and that is really the basics of making sure that we're following the statutes and the ordinances, we're referring to those when we make decisions and make decisions within the framework of the law that we're authorized under, key, key legal issues for people to be aware of and to be really versed in is the public records and open meetings law, so we'll be talking about those concepts as well, and just make sure that those issues are second nature as things come through. But as always, I'm available at any time. The clerk's office asked me to come over and do just kind of a mini-training on a specific topic, and I felt like that was really productive, and I want to encourage all the departments and the offices to do the same, and don't hesitate, or, you know, if you have a question about an issue, their issue was mechanics links, and it can be any topic that is, questions have been raised, or if there's been a change in the law, or something's going on in a department, I'm happy to come over, spend twenty minutes answering questions and reviewing the statute, and coming up with protocols that will help implement those laws, so, and yeah, so if there's, if there's any need for that, certainly don't hesitate to let me know, and we'll get it on the calendar and take care of it, so.
I have one question, I really appreciate your office, and having been there a few times, I understand the amount of time it just takes, and also, the one thing I learned in a short period of time, is the complexity of this entire operation, and I don't, I don't say that I know it, I just understand it, it is quite complex, and I'm thinking, I wonder, this has been raised once before at least, is looking forward, is your office staffed to manage that complexity? Because it's really, I think it is important, and I know that there's always this concern about getting top-heavy in any particular area, but compared to other counties, we're not, looked at that a little bit, how do you feel about that going forward?
Well, I appreciate the question, you know, I, I'm coming up on two years now, I've been here long enough to know a little, but not long enough to really be any kind of an expert, so, so I'll, I'll respond this way, I think that, I see some efficiencies that will be gained once we can get, kind of get a system in place for contract review and those kind of things that are not going to bog me down quite so much, and then I can focus more on some proactive things that won't be quite as time-consuming, so I'm not, I'm not saying that we need another attorney on the civil side, although some days it feels that way, but I really don't, actually, what I would like to do is ask me that question again a year from now.
We appreciate you so much.
But for right now, but for right now, really, I do, I do believe that we, with a little bit of patience and time, and Brian has really stepped up to help, help me with some of the civil stuff, as he's had time in his, in his time to, in his calendar to help me out, so if things get really busy on the criminal side, then we could suffer a little bit on the civil side. We've kind of launched into RS 2477 projects, which can be, which can certainly be time-consuming, but we take a team approach when it comes to those kind of things. I can help out, Brian can help out, Ashley can help out on all of those issues, and I think between the three of us, we can do it. And secondly, I think it's, it's really important that Brian weigh in on what he forecasts and sees on the criminal side, I think that could certainly, that could certainly change at any time, but for now, I do think, for now, I do think that we are staffed appropriately, and I'm happy with my workload, I've got plenty to keep me busy, and I know that there's some things that I would really like to get caught up on, but as I get caught up on those, I think I'll be okay.
Yeah, well, anyway, I don't think this office wants to see that one stressed too much.
Yeah, well, I got, and I have good support staff too, we, and we are, we are well-staffed on the support staff side, and that's helpful, so.
Like I tell you, it's been, it's been a really nice change from where we were a few years back with one and a half attorneys to where we are now, and I really appreciate the work on the cover sheet, I think that's made our job certainly much easier and quicker, but I think more importantly is your help on the planning and zoning issues and appeals, because that's where we're most liable for mistakes there, and then there's things that, that, you know, like I think it was Friday night, I sent an email about a fuel issue, and I'm not sure how that turned out, I'm waiting to talk to Jeff on that, but there might be some contract issues there that we need to look at, and having someone that knows that, you know, is important, when to pull that trigger and when not to.
I guess one of the, one of the, one of the benefits, you know, probably the primary, primary benefits of having this contract review process in place is, I really, it's really a good way to understand what the, what the workflow and what the departments do, without hopping in the truck and driving around to Jeff all day, I get a pretty good snapshot of what the needs of the road department is when I'm reviewing their contracts, and when you think about those kind of things, there, you talk about the complexity of government systems, there's a legal component to most decisions that we all make, probably all decisions that we make, but there's also a financial component, and a personnel, HR component, and a political component, and so we all have to work together as a team to, to, you know, take care of that, that slice of the pie that is, that is our individual responsibilities to make sure that we've, we've covered those bases, so as tedious as it can be to review and read and negotiate and work on these agreements, it's a good educational process for understanding what facilities does every day, and what their needs are, and having a cover sheet that, that gives an opportunity for the clerk's office to weigh in, for Jeremy on the IT side to weigh in, I think is, is really important, so decisions aren't being made that's going to leave the IT department completely out of the loop and not understanding that we're, we're making these commitments that are going to have a huge impact, not only on his staffing needs, but also on the network and the functionality of, of the databases that we use every single day, so I, I think that that's working, and I think that's gonna, gonna be an asset for the county.
Well, it's truly a team effort, and we're all getting along great, working well together, and I've seen when it hasn't been so great, and this has been phenomenal, taking a lot of stress off me.
I just feel like we're so much better protected.
Prosecutor, well, as far as the civil, as far as the civil division goes, we're in the customer service business, and you're customers, you are the customer, and my job is to help you do your job better, make it easier for you to make decisions and help you make your.
We can blame it on him.
Decisions, so, if I'm ever falling short on that, let me or Brian know, and we'll make some adjustments.
Yep, okay, any more questions for Brian?
Well, thank you, and happy holidays.
Same to you.
Okay, we'll move on down our list, the next is Sheriff.
I don't know how you guys do your job, I came through the canyon yesterday, and there were just stupid people, I saw some of the dumbest accidents, oh my gosh.
Yeah, there were a few.
A few.
Yeah, so I think we had a DUI in this last few days of the holiday, several accidents, and like you say, some of them were distracted driving, so guys were busy, and with the ice, you know, the freezing rain, that was, you know, hard to be getting around on, and some of the side roads are still that way, ice with rain on top. New recreational deputies are officially start next week, but they will be in attendance at the Donley Fun Run this next Saturday, then they'll be out about new jobs, so.
So they don't officially start in that capacity till next week?
What's that?
They don't officially start until next week in that capacity?
Right, yeah, yeah, because we had to wait for equipment and everything and get all of that. The other shift's covered by our other deputies, so look forward to that. We've got a lot of programs that, through contracts, that Oki worked on, and so we have just about every contract in the jail has been updated or changed out, we just have one more, I think it's on his bucket, the big one, so we appreciate that, and it's nice to have him helping with the questions in the civil division and records, and so the ladies over there really appreciate that, to know that they have someone that they can, you know, reach out to and help them out with their questions and move forward, so. IT still has a few modules from our new records management system that he, hopefully will get to, so we'll be able to use those.
Everything else has been updated though, IT-wise?
What's that?
Everything else has been updated IT-wise, correct? I mean, there was a, I just had received a question last week that there was a module or something that was still missing, so that must be.
Yeah, yeah, there are those, but I know that with all the changes and the moving around of different divisions within the county, you know.
It's at his hands, Paul.
Yep.
Well, I think the next big issue that we're going to start, and we're working on it, is the radios, the countywide radio system for all the emergency responders and all that, and I think that's going to be kind of spending, but I think long-term, it's going to be, it's going to save us.
Yeah, and the other thing is, since the other first responders are tied into our records management system and have their areas, they, you know, may need help and are changing out a few things, and IT has to be involved with that as well, so we have a couple of those jobs that need to be completed too, so.
Couple of questions I had, you know how many inmates we're in, are we still pretty full?
I didn't look this morning, but we've been just, you know, over thirty.
And then, how many deputies do we have now? Road deputies, sixteen?
Certified officers is how I go by.
Yeah, okay.
And so we have, I believe we are at twenty, that counts myself.
Because, you know, with the recreation deputies, you had to find two.
Right, so we have filled one of those positions.
So you have one more to go on that.
And we have one that needs to go to the academy, but it was canceled, so that position is. So that position is, is there, filled, but not certified. And probably won't be until this time next year.
There's only one academy in Idaho? I mean, you can't send him somewhere else or one in the north or?
Yeah. If you want to spend the money for housing and meals and that.
Oh, we have to spend money to.
That's covered.
Go to, oh, that's covered.
That's covered with the dorms and the, and the, um, cafeteria. We are doing that for a jailer. Uh, CDBI has waived, um, the tuition, which is about $2,000. But we will have to pay for, we can rent a dorm for $10 a day at the academy and then have to pay meals. But the only way we can get them through, and that's through detention, it's five weeks. Free dispatchers will be going to Ada County's academy for communications.
So this person that you've got in line for, can't become a deputy until next year?
Can't be certified.
Certified.
But still be trained through the field training and, you know.
So he could, they can at least come on a payroll and get.
Use them, um, but they'll have to be with another officer.
That's what I asked. I mean, is it worth it to pay the extra funds to get him certified? I mean, if it's a year out and you can't use them independently, they have to be with.
He can use it independently, but he can be with another officer.
Well, I think that's.
That would be, it's not in my budget. That's the reason.
I think wasn't the last time we'd elected was $14,000 to certify posts and all that?
Well, post.
That's.
Post costs are a lot higher than that because they have to pay for all of the instructors. So it's all balanced out. But for us to send them to another, um, agency that has their own, um, that would be the issue.
So I guess, I guess my question to that, uh, sheriff is, um, I mean, how, how does that weigh out in efficiency? I mean, you know, for instance, uh, I know that we're always challenged, it seems like to hire people to be able to get them because of base structure and all this other kind of stuff. So how do we, you know, I guess to go back to, um, Commissioner Wapman's question, you know, is it something that we might want to consider an extra expenditure for, for the overall efficiency of your operation?
Yes. This happened after we, after the budget was set. So, you know, my, my training budget is maybe what?
Yeah.
Eight, $9,000?
Maybe we should find out how much it would cost to do that. I mean, my question is, um, it is the efficiency, you know, I mean.
Yeah, I mean.
How cost effective is it?
You need them and if you can't effectively use them because of certification, it seems like there's a.
And I know that if ISP doesn't have the amount of people on 55, you know, I mean, that we're, that just makes us down one officer. And there's just been so much going on that.
So would you like the sheriff maybe to come up with, hey, this is what it would cost us to send?
We can give you that information.
Sure. And then we can talk about.
And I think it's worth it, you know.
You're going to find.
I think it's worth the conversation.
Quite a bit more money, but we'll see.
Yeah. We just didn't want to keep coming to you for continued money, you've, you know.
We don't want you to either, but sometimes. So sometimes it's worth that.
We just took off two certified. They stuck to work in recreation, you know.
You did.
Leave you weak. It just seemed like it's something the county should consider.
Right. We can give you that information. Much appreciate that.
Hey, any more questions for the sheriff? Thanks. Be safe out there. This wet ground, when it gets cold, it's going to be treacherous. Uh, next victim is treasurer. Good morning.
Good morning, commissioners. I hope you had a merry Christmas.
Hate too much again.
I did as well. Um, we've had a busy month this month. Since I last spoke with you, the treasurer's office was busy answering phone calls and taking payments and getting all the payments recorded. So far, as of last Friday morning, we've collected, uh, over $23 million in tax dollars.
Very good.
Uh, 20 or 39 million is what is to be collected. So we've collected over half of what's due, which is typical as of the first half payments. The rest is due on June 20th. My staff did a phenomenal job this year. I just want to give just a minute to shout out how wonderful they performed during the tax drive this year. I, I only have two years of experience, but, uh, from what I've heard in the past and from my experience last year, there was a lot of comp time earned. There was a lot of, uh, staying late in the evenings, threat, threats of working on the weekend. And, um, we never even had that cross our mind this year. So we did work some long hours, approximately nine hour days each day during the week, but nothing more than that. Uh, we were completely caught up and had every payment processed that we had received by the end of the day on Thursday of last week.
Nice.
So, um.
Impressive. Good job.
I'm, I'm very thrilled. The phone rings constantly over there. And typically when people call in, they're not calling to tell us thank you so much for taking my money at Christmas time. So the, the type of phone calls that they're taking and the attitudes that they're dealing with, they pushed through and worked hard and did such an amazing job and I'm so thankful and grateful. So if you get a chance to say thank you at all during this week, please do. They, they are amazing. So with the tax dollars that we've collected, I spoke with you two weeks ago about investing some of that short term before we need to turn it over. I was able to speak with the prosecuting attorney about the legality of that. And then I also spoke with four other treasurers from around the state. And yes, we do have the ability to invest those tax dollars as many treasurers have done this year since interest rates are so high. So, um, I decided to go on a two-tiered approach for the investing. I sent $10 million off to MBS, which buys bonds. That money will mature five days before we are required to turn it over and we'll make, uh, just over $28,000 on that 10 million. I sent an additional 7 million off to the LGIP, which is the state investment pool. That interest rate is calculated based on a daily average balance and it fluctuates each month. So I'm not sure exactly what that rate will be yet, but we make good money off of that as well. I have an additional $5 million that I plan to send to them this week. And I would estimate that we'll collect about a million more before the end of the month, before we need to turn it over to the clerk's office. So things are going well in that regard and, um.
Great job on researching that.
Well, thank you. It's a, it's an easy time to be successful in earning interest. So I hope you keep that in mind when the economy is doing well and interest rates go back down to zero.
You don't do that.
Other than that, we, uh, we're just working on making sure everything's cleaned up and processed. We have a few loose ends to take care of by the end of the week, but, uh, overall taxes is what we're focused on.
Joanna, I think I asked you this once, but I forgot your answer. I, you told me that the electronic payments, that's going up every year.
It is going up. I haven't had a chance to analyze. I, I do plan to spend a lot of time in the month of January analyzing when payments are coming in and how they are coming in. Uh, the one data point that I remember is that our biggest days' worth of transactions last year was 19 pages of transactions. And on the 19th, the day before the, the deadline, we had 43 pages of transactions. So in that aspect, it's doubled, which, uh, because we implemented a automatic system to enter those payments into our tax system, that's taken a lot of the staff time down in my office.
Well, it'd be interesting to, to note too, that the article you put in with the tax notices by shape and all that stuff has been very well received by a lot of people.
Yes.
People are actually looking at that and it's not my county taxes that are going up. It's so-and-so and this and this, and I'm not going to name them here, but that was a great idea to explain to them, hey, it's not all county that's doing this. It's other agencies too.
Yes. We have gotten very good feedback on the insert and on the new tools that are available on the website. So I'm excited. I'm excited to sit down and process some of the feedback and the data that we've received. I haven't had the chance to yet, but I hope in January and February to be able to do that.
And I might suggest that maybe you put a little dash on the website or McKenzie in the paper that this is where you've invested these funds. This is the interest rates you're going to get to show the public that we are good caretakers of those funds. We are not just sitting there 0% and let the public know that we do invest and try and help as much as we can.
Yeah, that's a good suggestion. I'll work with McKenzie on that.
Anything else for Joanna? Well, yeah, she was talking about stopping by and saying that, I'm thinking there's people, you could, you know, you're interfering if you stop there. I've noticed that. It's pretty businesslike.
Only we're to stay for half an hour.
We're working hard all the time.
Kind of a supplemental message there.
All right. Well, thank you. Have a happy new year.
Yep. Thank you very much. Okay. I don't see you, Net. I don't see Skip. I don't see Melissa. Pat, I guess you're up first.
That's kind of crazy, huh?
Morning.
Good morning. This thing gets right to work, quite the workout, doesn't it?
Yeah.
So I want to get the action item out of the way first. We've had, um, people that have had COVID. And currently our policy says, which was put in place prior to COVID, that, um, if you are out of the office for three days or more, you need to bring a doctor's note. However, when COVID came along, we kind of put that aside for COVID-related issues, um, but kept it for others. So what I'd like to propose, um, is that we change the amount of time that somebody is out of the office, that they need a, a doctor's note to return. So from three to five days. So if you're out five days, you need a doctor's note to.
So you're going to leave the three in there, three to five?
No, but I'm taking the three out. Just take the three out and make it five instead. In general, I mean, everybody's different and every disease is different, right? But in general, um, most people are better within five days, even with COVID. But we have been asking people to get, I mean, if they want to, they can do a negative test. We don't push them.
So do we require, or they're taking this off as sick leave?
No, PTO, everything is PTO.
Oh, that's right. We converted that.
Yep.
And even with the flu, you know, the five days is normal for return. And if somebody wants to come back sooner than the five days or, you know, they can take a negative test on COVID. And we're just, you know, we're just asking people, stay home when you don't feel good.
Yes.
That we're not spreading anything.
Yes. We all shut a department down last week.
Can't think of any drawback.
Just want to make things easier, more clear. Cause where, where people were asking me questions is that I thought the policy said three days, we have to have a doctor's note.
We try it, see how it works. If we don't like it, then go back to three.
Well, the curious thing is, um, we can, but the curious thing is we had five days. And then at some point we changed it to three. So it was five at some point.
Boy, you're going way back now.
Well, I think what we need to do is make sure that our, uh, FMLA policy and our, um, our return to work policy are consistent.
Right.
And I, I do think that there may be a concern. I could understand why you went to three because that, first of all, it's standard practice. That was before COVID. So I don't know what standard practices are now, but I mean, you know, people could abuse that. But if they have the PTO available, that's the bottom line. And if you don't, you want to return sooner, just make sure that you're healthy before you return.
Yes.
Cause you're impacting other people that may not have PTO available.
Yes.
Well, the other issue that's coming up, I think it's in April, is they're declaring the pandemic over. And so you will not be eligible for Medicaid. You'll have to get your own personal insurance and that's about to kick in nationwide. And I don't know how that's going to affect, probably won't affect this policy too much because everyone here has insurance. But for the general public, it's going to be a big change, especially for the state of Idaho.
In April? I thought it was already over.
Well, it's officially going to be over in April and then you don't get subsidized Medicaid. You're going to have to either pay, you're going to start getting your own personal insurance. So. I'm trying to remember why they went back to three.
I don't know. I think I was trying to be consistent with FMLA and probably, I, cause I did it. And probably it was a matter of reading the FMLA and it said three days. But, um, I think we just have to have a policy and stick with it.
And the problem, the problem has been if we're requiring somebody to go out to the doctor in three days and it's the flu, you know, they get a doctor's note. But if you have COVID, you're supposed to stay home for five days after symptoms. So you can't make them go home, you know, or go and get a doctor's excuse. Doctors don't want people in that have COVID. So if we make it just five days, it's consistent across the board, don't abuse it, you know, and move forward with that.
And heavenly days if you still have symptoms at five days, don't come to work.
Stay home. Exactly.
So then, uh, I need a motion to approve that?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we re, uh, approve the change to the requirement for a doctor's note to go to five days.
Moved in second in all favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, motion carries. I guess my only follow-up on that, Pat, is we'll see how it works. If we start getting abuse, then we'll have to, need to rethink this, but. Downtown shopping on day four, okay?
Yeah. I think if, if that, if we do get, um, abusive issues, the supervisor needs to handle that within the context of what we have for disciplinary action anyway. So, yeah. You know, I really don't have a lot to report. It seems like this time of year, everything just kind of comes to standstill. I do remind, to remind you that I'm taking Thursday of this week off. I did send out an email on Wednesday. I had to think about what day it was. On Wednesday to remind everybody that if you are ill to stay home. We don't want you bringing whatever it is that you've had or getting to work. Cause we don't want to shut departments down as we have in the past. It doesn't matter whether it's a flu or the COVID or a cold or RSV or whatever it is, it can still shut the department down if everybody gets sick. So I did send that out. And I think that that's it. Even the recruiting has slowed down. So I'm going to repost the four positions that we have open right now at the first of the year and just start afresh.
Okay. Any questions for Pat? Okay. Thank you. Okay. Since, uh, Jeremy's not here and I don't see Cindy, I'm going to ask Kevin, do you want to come up and do you have anything you want to add?
Either Kevin?
Either Kevin. Nope.
You guys can't stay close together.
And if not, Mike, do you have anything you want to add? Okay. Then we'll move on down. I guess our next victim will be Larry.
Good morning. I'm trying to say good morning, but every time I look outside, boy, things have really fallen apart. It's duck weather. It's tough weather. Yeah. No duck, duck. Duck weather? Okay. Sorry. Um, and I was glad to see, I know that, uh, the, um, search and rescue got called out for missing, somebody was missing, but they found them right away. So. Well, good. Yeah. I was glad to see that. As you guys know, we're, we're working on that Claire Craig grant and we've run into a, a problem. We're fine on the toilet with a match and everything. We're fine on the rough grading. Three years ago, I got a quote from, uh, Idaho Power, the $17,000 to run the line overhead. They do not want to run lines overhead anymore. So their quote came in to me at 30 to $40,000 plus we got to pay for a trench. The trench is 2,000 feet. Jeff said that it costs $5, $6,000. So we're going to hold off on the power on this first phase and we'll start that process again next year. We'll just do the, and the vault of toilets is really the biggest thing to get in there, get it rough graded, get that ground stabilized. So.
I'm feeling, Larry, like we need to get it open and get money coming in and then we'll go back on phase two.
I don't disagree.
So is that Jeff digging the trench?
That'd be Jeff digging the trench.
You should know a free backhoe operator. Unless you know somebody that has a backhoe that doesn't have anything to do.
Well, I actually do.
A good backhoe.
Oh, son of a gun. Always got to make it difficult.
Very. I appreciate that deal that Jeff can come in and do all this kind of stuff. But, you know, it's just, we've been struggling, this road crews have been a long time. And I just keep bleeding off the road crew from their jobs. I mean, it seemed like this needs to be standalone contract personally.
Yeah. And, and I'm not giving up on the overhead lines quite yet. I kind of, I ran into a roadblock on that with Idaho Power. Um, I don't. Anyway, I'm not going to give up on that because it's a lot less money and, and a lot more efficient for us.
So you might look at the return on that investment too. How long will it take us to pay it back? I mean, if we go ahead and front it with ARPA funds, you know, I mean, you can increase, if you have power out there, you got a lot higher nightly return.
Well, the comment, the comment was made by Idaho Power that since we're the ones running it in, if anybody hooks onto it, they got to pay a percentage of it back to us. But that's only good for five years. So they wait five years, they win. So it's kind of a.
Well, it isn't the power that's out there now. Well, isn't the power that's out there now above ground, through all those cabins just south? That's what I'm trying to remember. There's that.
To the south.
Where you curve, where you make the curve, and before you get to the parking lot, there's those cabins up there.
Yeah, that's all above ground.
That's all above ground.
That's, that's where we're hooking in, is, is.
Like a tenth of a mile.
The only other way would be down below is to get an easement from the one landowner.
Oh, yeah, and that's.
I brought that up once, and I don't think that was a good idea.
You might do at least a, you know, an ROI and just figure out what's the, what's your return? If you can charge a higher nightly return.
That's why we decided to make it a next year's project to try to get that going. I had mentioned, let's see, I told you the new groomer would be on the first of December, third week of December. Now it's the first or second week of January, so.
Hi, Jane.
Yeah, also, I forward, I'm kind of in a hurry, because I got a bunch of stuff to do out on our parking lots, which have fallen apart. I forward to you a piece of legislation that's being proposed by the State ATV Association to allow IDL to enforce on, on state ground. You know, right now, IDL can't do it. There's nothing in legislation to allow them to. And we kind of feel it's, it's pretty important for them to be able to enforce on people that are damaging the state land, so. State ATV Association is sponsoring that. You might want to read through it. If there's anything you think should be changed, let me know, or send it to State ATV Association, because they're looking for comment now. I think when it finally makes the legislation, I'd be happy to go down and testify for it.
Larry, how's that been enforced in the past, if at all?
It really hasn't. They've got a private guy that takes pictures of license plates, and they'll call the sheriff or something and try to do something that way. At eleven thirty, I think you guys have a reimbursement signing on that Wellington grant. Do I need to be there for that? Okay.
You guys have stuff to do, go do it.
Yeah, our parking lots are completely, we've got people.
We can handle that.
We've got people stuck everywhere right now.
We can handle that.
All right, thank you, guys.
Okay.
What a beautiful Christmas, huh?
Thank you very much.
Get out the ark, or the, oh, build a boat.
So I guess that's all we have on the list until we get to buildings and grounds at ten thirty. Anybody else want anything, anything to add or say? If not, we will go mute and see everyone back here at ten thirty.
Chairman, we are live again.
Okay, welcome back everybody. We're in the morning session of December twenty seventh. Our next agenda item is buildings and grounds. Scott, come on up the mic. Give us the news.
Well, they're trying to get our baler fixed. Problem is if we had our cover over it, we could probably, you know, like, we could put open containers and take the cardboard, but they have to be weatherproof and the only ones that we really have are the ones they have there. So right now, just gonna have to dump it on the floor up there till we can get it and get it running. I have been buying another repair facility, Clearwater Equipment and Eagle. He's, you know, doing the compactor at the new Whole Foods. He's just real busy, but trying to get him probably the first or next week sometime, see if we can get it back up and running. And he does do leases and stuff, what he's planning to me. And then I'm gonna talk with Mitch when he worked over there at Plexus, their compactor, cardboard compactor was a lease. So let's see if we can explore that. If this one, we can't limp this one along till we can get our new facility, you know, designed and constructed. So that's kind of where we're at with that right now.
And you'll kind of get a known answer by the first or next week, you think?
Well, I'd like to do, I'll get an answer this week if he can come next week. Westpac, I don't know what's happened to them. The gentleman that worked on ours for years and had knowledge of it, did all the rebuild on it last year, has retired, and it seems that they're having difficulty finding a tech that can last. We just had repairs done a month ago on it and the first tech came up, put a part in and went back and quit.
Oh my gosh.
And the other gentleman, he's actually out of the Midwest, is very knowledgeable about him, but his name's Bill. He told me he was coming on the twentieth and then he has the gal that schedules the service called Terry at the, at Lake Shore and said wasn't coming and had no idea when they could. He and I have both been calling and leaving voicemails on their service and they don't call either one of us back. Know what's going on there. I've heard that they've been bought out by somebody else. Let's keep after till we can get it running and see if we can, if we need to lease something that we can get us by till we get something new constructed.
Scott, a couple of questions. So we're, to be clear about this, our cardboard is landing up, if we collect cardboard, it's gonna land up in the landfill? Until at least we get this fixed. So do we go online? Have you been on our Facebook or anything to let people know that that may happen to their cardboard? For instance, I keep mine at home.
Yeah.
I know, but yeah.
No, you know.
Just wanting to keep it until such time as we get it fixed.
Yeah, I mean, we need to let the public know that if they're going to the trouble to bring us in, it's gonna land up in the landfill if we don't, until we get our fix. In other words, let's give them a chance if possible to help store it for us till we get ready to go for it.
Yeah, I mean, it's like me, I don't want to store it, so, you know, let them bring it and we'll take care of it for them, you know, but yeah, we can do that.
So I would let Mackenzie know and she could put something in the paper this week. This is the worst time of the year for that.
Yeah, it happened at the worst time.
Yeah, I mean, this is a big time of year.
With Christmas, they're gonna have so much, I don't think people are gonna want to store much of it.
Also, when they arrive at the transfers or the they should be told that this cardboard will probably land up in the landfill if you leave it. You know, because people are willing to recycle, opportunity to help us out with that. That's a great idea. The other one is when we, going forward in this thing, and I visited a few minutes with you this morning about that, but having these distant, you know, maintenance people for these pieces of equipment we got is just a tough way to do business. And I think it seemed to be like any piece of equipment, we have to deal with that, we should be searching for that person locally to be willing to learn about that piece of machinery, because it's not like rocket science, I'm sure. It's just, you know, it's, it's just technically, it's just different maybe than something might have been accustomed on a day-to-day places they're working with. So we don't land up in this position anymore than possible.
Well, it's important to keep in mind that this is really Lake Shore's employee that runs this machine. And Lake Shore's got to step up and say, hey, we need to. Whether or not they will is a different story.
Well, how do we?
Lake Shores, they, they haven't worked on and then passed the bill and a lot of time, you know, then we end up paying sales tax and stuff on it, so I'd rather, you know, we contact, have Lake Shore contact us, it's our baler, say, hey, you know, I contact Westpac, clear, you know, to avoid, you know, and it is our piece of equipment.
Yeah, I know.
And I did ask them if they knew of anybody else and once they came up was Wes Call out of Portland, which I don't want to pay a service call from there.
Now, that's, that's why I say it's really, really, in my opinion, important to have somebody in the wings that knows something about this. They may have to learn about it. You know, I have to give them some sort of a call contractual.
That's why I like the leasing option, is if we lease it, then they're in charge of fixing it.
Yeah, that's, I can say what he was explaining to me, why we're kind of down the list, because he takes care of his lease customers first and stuff, but.
If you have a contractual agreement, most contractual agreements have penalties. I mean, you know, you, you enter into a contract, you're committed to it. It's like the contractor pick up your garbage. If two or three days, they go, well, our trucks are broken down, we can't pick up our garbage. What we have with that, you know, I mean, it's important service.
I don't think there's anything in our, well, Lake Shore, picking up a private garbage has nothing to do with us.
I understand, I mean, just an example.
You know, and trying to get a person to train on it that he may have, once a year, come look at it. It's, it's something you've got to be practiced at or you lose it. And I don't want someone learning on our piece of equipment, so unfortunately, like our heavy equipment and everything else, there's, but we can.
It may be something that that operation, the operators there need to learn how to, you know.
So as far as a lease, when could we get a lease?
I need to talk to him about that, because he threw that out there, that, you know, that's one of the reasons why he couldn't come up right now, because he had leased equipment, because he does lease it. And like I say, Mitch told us that the one they had at Plexus for their cardboard was the least piece of equipment. Westpac did work on it down there, like Mitch says, that's the only people I know that work on them. So I don't know if they leased that from Westpac or what they did. I just know this Clearwater Equipment, name is Jim West, was saying that's one of the reasons why he can't come up. He's got a bunch of his lease stuff at Cincy's and stuff that he needs to deal with his customers first, you know.
And I think we need to know the cost behind all of that, Scott. I think we need a full presentation on, you know, what it's gonna cost to fix it versus lease it, you know, what is your return on that, you know, what are we looking at long-term? And get an action item on, I mean, this is an important thing. We can't just sit and wait for a resolution. We've got to figure out what the resolution is sooner than later.
It's tough for the public to be at, you know, they're, just like me, you know, I collect that stuff, we take care of it, we take it there to be recycled. All of a sudden, you find out, and it just happened to us before, when we weren't doing a very good job with it, it was contaminated. And nobody likes to hear that. It's not fair for them to have to hear that, so.
I agree. We need to get something out in the paper. This is what's going on. Save it if you can, you know, and let people make that decision for themselves. Some people have the ability to to wait, and it would be important for them to do that. But I think we need to figure out what the resolution of this is sooner rather than later.
So just keep us in the loop with what you find out, Scott. What else you got?
Dylan Bar Flooring came up and re-glued the carpet in E O C. I mean, it wasn't free, but they came up and pulled up all the loose carpets and re-glued them back down. And then actually left us a container of the glue, so if we have any issues with any of the other ones, we can do it ourselves. So that's kind of resolves the issue with the carpet coming up up there. It's what the guy was telling me, it's kind of one of the things, those carpet tiles are made to come up in case one is damaged, that's why we went to them and I don't know, just because of the age of the glue, you know, and that's original flooring when they cleaned it. I mean, they gotta be able to clean the carpet tiles because everybody's putting in basically in commercials so they can. But anyway, those are glued back down, so that issue's kind of resolved up there. Other than that, we're just, you know, trying to keep things cleaned up around here and stuff. We did we do have a truck with a sander now. It's just I don't know when the road department's mechanically at time to get it set up and stuff, but Mitch went down with the truck last week that was transferred to us from the weed department and picked it up at utility truck and trailer and it's, just like I say, it's in line or something to when they can get to it.
Are you having any issues with people parking out on that northern fence line? This side of the storage, but I saw people over the weekend that actually left their vehicles on our property and they were exchanging vehicles and cars, but I see that one of them is still parked out there. Do we need a no parking other than county?
Again, yeah, I wasn't aware, you know, they're doing that. I mean, we, we do have people come and park that are, you know, that have to spend the weekend in jail and stuff, and then we we have one out there that's kind of a dilemma. It's a little blue Subaru. It sat in front of the U of I for a long time. It said, someone's pulled the plates on it now, it said, for you, Rose. When I inquired about, no one wants to tell me who it belongs to. Then it got moved from over there to over the long-term parking.
And we pull the, the, what is it? It's not social security number, serial number.
Yeah, I, you know, and then now someone's come and taken the plates off it, and I don't know if it's just abandoned.
You can look at the VIN number and they can trace it.
Have the sheriff's department pull the VIN on it and figure out who it is.
If it belongs to someone they know or what, but I have not been able to, because we've requested that.
Have it towed.
And then there was, that's why I'm at the point right now, is, you know, have it taken and I don't know where we take it, but.
Is it a pretty old beat-up car?
No, it's actually a pretty nice little Subaru is what it is.
Because we can also take ownership and salvage auction it in the fall.
There actually is a state, the state law is an abandoned deal like that is that you do have to go through this kind of little process of notification and then at one point, if you don't have it, it's yours if you want.
Then there was, there was another car backed in and it was jacked up and the right rear tire was off it for a long time. I need to see if it's still there, but I didn't know people were using it for weekend parking area.
Somebody with Washington plates there yesterday that were definitely snowboarding, so that was.
Well, I know Valley White had a propane truck parked there one weekend and that was kind of in the way, but.
That one had the lug nuts had come off the back rear tire and they just didn't want to drive it any further. The lug nuts, they did get it moved, so I went and asked them about it and stuff, but yeah.
This Subaru, if it's in good enough shape, you might want to decide to lay a claim on it. We'll take ownership of it, we'll throw it in the motor pool, we can use it for stuff around here.
Other than that, really comes to mind at the moment. You got any questions for me?
Scott, I don't know if you were in here, the commissioners did approve the clerk's office utilizing this, the recreation, old recreation office for the file boxes that are in your new equipment storage, so when you guys have time, if you could work with Leanne on transitioning those boxes over here and getting that area cleaned up, so you guys can have it.
So we're gonna need to build shelves in there to put them on and stuff?
I don't want anything permanent, so if we can come up with an idea, just to bring in a few at a ti- I, I don't know if you can work with Leanne and myself to develop a system that doesn't create a permanent structure, bookshelves like was happened the last time.
Is it that much stuff?
There's.
There's a lot of boxes.
I hope they all fit over here. There's still a couple desks over here too, but we can put those downstairs or something. Or surplus those, get rid of them somewhere.
Yeah, because we have desks actually stored over there too, in, in the very front of where the roll-up door is, is what we have stored there, so.
So we can surplus those?
What's that?
The desks. You can surplus them if nobody has a use for them, if they're old steel or metal desks or something. We can put them in the surplus and get rid of them this fall, or if they're in the way, we can take them to the landfill and recycle them. Kind of your call.
Yeah, well, we've done, kind of started doing that with some of the office chairs and things. Thing is that we got is we got like fifty-two file cabinets stored right now. I don't know if we need to put them in the surplus if, you know, with everything going to digital storage and everything now and scan, I don't know if we.
How would you feel about trying to sell them in the paper or online or something?
What we do with them. Load them up and take them down to Pacific Steel and see if they give us for a trailer load of, you know, I don't know. I really don't want to do with them.
You don't want to store them forever, what, trying to make a decision?
Get rid of half of them. Yeah, we're, we've been short a storage room and we've basically got the old search and rescue house, just, it's packed to the gills right now. And stuff with people moving desks, getting rid of their desks, buying new ones. I don't know if we need to store desks, because everyone is gonna replace their desk with a new one.
Absolutely.
Now, so I don't think we need to store them.
I agree a hundred percent.
Kind of hate to see, you know, it's a good desk, but, you know.
Sell them. I mean, put it in the paper. Have Mackenzie do an ad for you and put them in the paper. And just ask people if they want them, and if people don't want to buy them, then let's get rid of them.
Is there a process? They have to go through the central county property and stuff?
Does it have to be this fall? Do we have to wait until?
We can do it now. We can do it anytime. We just have to.
Let me get inventory of what we got and what we don't want, because like I say, it seems now that we're just replacing desks with new ones. And, you know, if somebody needs one, we're not refocusing much anymore, so.
There's two more in here. We get rid of those two. And I think one downstairs, isn't it?
It's actually custom-made. They called in Mr. D, he worked with Scott Deong. He built that, or no, that one was built by one of the sheriff's deputies. It was in the assessor's office, that one that's sitting down there. It's kind of, it's really a nice piece of work, but I don't know what we do with that.
Is it an oak or wooden one?
Yeah, and it's a ninety-degree. I mean, it's, it's, you look in where the old DMV was, where the file room was, it's, we set it back up in there because we had no place to put it. And it's actually.
Mr. D built that one my first year, second year.
He built, um, uh, June was telling me, he built her desk and stuff in her office, the cabinet deal there. And I thought she told me he was a sheriff's deputy or something, built that one or something, but, yeah.
It might be nice for us to have a desk down there, just to have someplace to go set up, but.
Set up, right, it's set up in there, in the corner, you go in the door.
Anybody opened that door, Scott, because when Park and Rec opened that door, it smelled like mold again. I haven't been in that room, but I think we need to open that door and make sure that, you know, it's cleared out. I don't want to sit down there unless I know for certain that.
Yeah.
Or mold-free.
Probably just needs to be aired out.
Yeah, that's what it was, once they heated it up and aired it out, the smell went away. Their last test in there was two and a half years ago and the mold count was higher outside than in in the room, so it's, I don't believe there's any mold issues there, it's just.
Do we have anything in the boiler room?
It's the way it smells when you close it up, it gets musty and stuffy inside.
Do we have anything in the boiler room that's an issue?
Uh-uh, no.
No?
Nope.
Hey, what else you got?
Make sure I get in there.
That's about it.
So, um, Scott, one question too. Do you, um, have any decision been made on that, that next pile that's left up at, uh?
Well, they're supposed to burn it when they get a window, is what they were supposed, I requested them to do.
Do you don't?
You know, I can't force them, it's under their jurisdiction, I can't make them burn it. So, I wish it had been burnt at the time they did the other one, but.
That's what I, I feel.
I wasn't up there that Saturday, cause that's the weekend my mom passed away, then I was in the valley, but, um, uh, yeah.
It's an interesting deal, because I had no idea until I went up there that they was, and all it was left.
Yeah.
And I, and they did have a great window, they did a good job. Their quality's been great.
Yeah.
But I'm concerned now we've got tons of what more moisture in that other one.
Yep.
And then, you know, it's just like, Phil, what did you hear, have you heard anything about this guy that, uh, is kind of interesting and grimey?
Campbell's is the name, I've talked to him, he wants to do some more research on, you know, he wants to talk to Icola and.
Yeah.
And, uh, yeah, and do some more research before he commits to doing it, is, um, what he told me, and said he'd get back to me.
So what's your overall impression of, uh, what we, you know, we actually tried to aid that program with a fairly expensive piece of equipment last year to help them do a better job of that. And one of the things I remember is separating heavy stuff and that kind of thing. And do you feel, what your observation is, that was met the expectation?
Yeah, I think it did. I think we need to get the operators some more training up there on how to stack it, after talking with the guys from Southern Idaho.
Yeah.
Timber Association, um, speaking with him, he said they got a couple people that they've got a knack for stacking or have learned, you know? So I think we need to get Eric and Wyatt and the other operators up there and see if we can get them next spring, um.
Yeah. Cause I know that.
One will be here at one, you can.
I had some, I took some pictures of those, the remaining parts of that. There's quite a few big stumps in it and start large, the log-like material. And I understand that was, I know that's a problem, I understand that was gonna be understood at that time, that it was gonna be separated out to make that.
Some of it got stacked up before we got the excavator up there, so, you know, it probably was down in the pile, you know, once buried. Cause we started off the year with the loaders, again pushing it up with the loaders till we got that, so. But I was up there last week and it was actually still burning.
Yeah.
Uh, burning pretty good in some spots, some large, um, when I was up there last Thursday.
I bet it's not now.
No.
Well, that, you know, they were pretty, basically just pushing it up, and I actually recommended it, well, it opened up a little bit, but.
Yeah. But, um, it was actually burning still pretty good, um, like I say, it's.
Anyway, it's been a much more pleasant in the, in the valley. This year through that, I just hope we can get through the next one and then looking forward to the future, where we're gonna go with that.
Yeah.
You know?
Does your purple layer have two sensors right side by side, and one's one and one's forty-nine?
Probably somebody burning their wood stove and that one. No, I've questioned that a lot too, you know, the, you will see that, and you'll see it in cities all around also. But right there, what's happening, you know? And there, there's undoubtedly a local influence, you know?
Okay, any more questions for me?
I think so, Scott.
Your new gentleman is working out well?
Yes, very well, very good.
Awesome, so is Scott done, I know his last, they're having a party tomorrow or something?
Wednesday, um, you know, uh, have a congratulation on retirement going away on Thurs- or Wednesday, and then, um, Friday's his last day.
Okay, Friday's his last.
Yep.
But he's excited. I'm envious, my husband's last day was today.
Was it?
Still sleeping when I left home.
You work for free after that.
That is a true statement.
Yeah.
I gave him my honeydews, I hope they're done.
Hey, thanks, Scott.
Okay.
Keep us in the loop on that baler.
I better hope he's not listening.
Okay, our next agenda item was with our road and bridge supervisor, but he is unable to obtain, uh, uh, attend. Due to plowing snow all night last night in water, so we're gonna mute and we'll see everybody back here at eleven-thirty.
So Ed, you want to come back and we'll get started?
We're live again, Mr. Chair.
Hey, welcome back everybody. We're still in the morning session on December 27th. Our next agenda item is an action item. This is a request from McCall Mobile Medicine to receive funding for opioid settlement funds. And we have Courtney Hill online. So Courtney, at this time, welcome. I'm just going to turn it over to you and let us hear kind of what you're thinking about and ask you a few questions and go from there.
Okay, thank you. I'm pretty new at this.
Same kind of specializing in mental health and family medicine as well as addiction medicine. And I just have a compassionate heart for people that struggle with all types of addiction. And so I've been blessed to be able, to be trained at Idaho State University as well as in their Suboxone clinic. I worked for the residency for over ten years. And so had a lot of training with Dr. Neil Reagan as far as starting patients on Suboxone and medication assisted treatment and the different methods there. I have my X waiver. I've had that for, oh, four years, almost five. So I feel comfortable starting patients on these medications and educating them how they work and then following them safely, you know, and talking them through it and getting, and also having them be engaged in treatment with your drug screens and not in a punitive way, but just kind of collaborative. And, you know, if they're struggling, then let's talk about that and how good, what's going on. And then I can use my mental health then to kind of work on distress tolerance, right? Or we're motivational interviewing. What's happening? Why are they going back to substances to cope with X Y Z in their life? So I work right now with Cascade Medical Center. Very fortunate to work there. I love it there. So that's my primary job and then I just have some other, it's part-time, so I have to supplement my income to make it up here with some other side stuff. And so I started McCall Mobile Medicine primarily to just help people in Valley County that didn't have means or in means for transportation to get to places, but also funds to pay for it. And so I just do cash pay, forty dollars. I haven't had a lot of business, but when there have been people that are, I feel like there's this window of opportunity when somebody's ready to quit and they are seeking help. Then if you don't jump on it, it kind of passes for who knows how long, you know? And so I like to make myself available via telemedicine because then I can be anywhere and see them and do our visit and multiple times of the day depending on my other work schedule. When I'm in the clinic, that's first, but I make it work outside of clinic hours or on lunchtime. And yeah, just trying to fill in a little bit of a gap. And sometimes they're just needing a little bit of assistance until they get into the office. It's either primary care doctor or their scheduled appointment. And so I just kind of do that bridge, if you will, for them.
So Courtney, how do you plan on using the ten thousand? Is that all for salary or is there gonna be other costs in there?
Yeah, so it's, so Ron, so in order to run McCall Mobile Medicine, I've been funding it myself. But, I mean, it's electronic medical records because I escribe, you know that. And then it's also my insurance, I mean, I have my own medical non-practice insurance. And then all of the overhead, you know, as far as like internet and, or I have a rental store that I'll use sometimes or for my office, if you will, my other jobs and then to see the patients. And so kind of having an allowance there so that they're not having to come up with the money. And then I'll be able to see many more patients hopefully where that cost is a barrier. I do try to keep it really affordable, but.
So this will subsidize some of those costs for new patients, that kinda deal? And you are also a MAP provider, is that correct? And you're the only one up here now besides physicians?
Correct, that I'm aware of. I do, I do not know St. Luke's providers very well. And so I'm not sure how many MAP providers they have or if they have mid-level MAP providers. But I'm the only mid-level MAP provider in Cascade.
And we used to have a MAP provider in Donley. Sure, do you remember her name?
Yes, yeah, well, she worked with.
Barbara Noakes.
Barbara Noakes, not Noakes.
No, Barbara Norton.
Norton, Barbara Norton.
And she wasn't a MAP provider, but she had a nurse practitioner that she had hired.
Right. So.
I guess, trying to, trying to wrap my mind around some of this. So you talk about MAP providers, medical assisted.
Medication assisted treatment.
There you go, medical assisted treatment. Medication, medication assisted treatment. So what, what kind of a certification do you have to have or should have? And how do you link with any kind of a certified program within the state, for instance? And in regards to your, the validity of your service, I guess, you know, how's that like?
So, and you can, yeah, so there is a, I can look it up really quick, but there will be a website on Sam's Stamp Shop for X waivered providers. So my DEA, I have an X in front of it for Suboxone, for opioid use disorders in order to treat those. You can use Suboxone and Methadone without an X waiver, which is like this specialized certificate or training in addition to your DEA.
Okay, give it, because we're not in the medical community, what's DEA?
DEA is your controlled substance license.
So, let me get this. So a DEA is a person that can actually prescribe opioids to people like dentists and doctors for pain medication. A MAP provider is a person that can provide the drugs to get people off opioids. Does that make sense?
So, yes, MAP is used, right, to prevent patients from using opioids or abusing, if you will, that have an opioid use disorder. But they had a problem, they wanna get off, they can't do it without the medication. So now you're using Suboxone, Methadone, controlled substances to treat that disorder. DEA is Drug Enforcement Administration. All right, so, right, providers have these, like dentists and physicians and mid-levels or advanced practitioner providers have their controlled, their DEA is the Drug Enforcement Administration, their controlled substance license. If they're gonna prescribe controlled substances. Now, if you're gonna use, right, this medicine specifically to keep people off of opioids, you have to have an X waiver with your DEA. And that is through Echo Idaho. So I took my course in December of twenty eighteen, which is extensive community health outreach with University of Idaho. And it was online and so you would have to do a bunch of didactics online, about eight hours. And then there was a sixteen-hour class that we took.
Yeah, that's where I was trying to get at, where, you know, how does this, what's the platform that this all falls under statewide, yeah?
Well, we have all these opioid funds that are very prescriptive use for those monies. We can't just use them anywhere.
Right.
And this is a great use for them. However, my feeling is that I would like some, maybe some staffs on this, Courtney. How many folks you're helping every, every, maybe every quarter come back on and come in and see us and tell us this is how many folks I've helped or this is what we're doing or where we are in that process? I don't like to just give somebody ten thousand dollars and never see them again.
And I would like a letter of support from the hospital if that's where you're affiliated with in Valley County. We do have the one that's from V Corp, which there's a lot of people on that. However, on V Corp that are very in tune to the mental health conditions in this area. But I would like to have whoever you're currently partnering with, something from them stating, you know, what type of services you're providing and a little more information.
I'm not really partnering with anyone else. This is, so this is my sole, you know, this is my sole business. And partnering as far as like with V Corp, you know, I'll get referrals from that or, but I guess I'm not sure. You just want the letter of support from Cascade Medical Center that we're in collaboration and not.
Well, I guess we need more information from you on your background, who you are, you know. The only thing we're getting is from an individual that I don't know. I don't have anything in front of me that says what you've done, what your focus is, where these funds are gonna be used. And you're asking for funding. I need more.
There needs to be a business plan or something.
I saw a letter of support from V Corp.
And from Courtney, did you see her?
No.
We, the letter from V Corp was just submitted this morning. The other letter was included in your packet.
Let me look again.
Okay, so there's another letter. That should have just come through then.
I have a V Corp letter of support.
Letter of support, okay.
And ream, and reimbursement notice. I don't, I don't know that I got that letter done.
Yeah, so it's, yeah, it's in your packet. It's under the V Corp one. It's different than the V Corp in the other one.
That's one was specifically sent this morning, specifically from V Corp. The other one was.
I understood that was the same one. I apologize. That one came this morning. There's something else in here. Again, though, I mean, this is, this is a letter from somebody I don't know.
And search copies of certificates, is that what you're looking for or?
Maybe, again, like Commissioner Hasbrook stated, I mean, how many people are you helping in the area? You know, so maybe statistics, what you're recommending, what, what's your business plan for these funds? How are you going to expand services, continue to contribute to the services here?
Letter kind of explains a lot of that, Sherry.
Okay, well, let me take.
I'll set the cost.
And all down, yeah, I have all this, yeah. And I can give you receipts or transparent on that. Yeah, I'll do that.
Well, and kinda what's rolling in my little brain, Courtney, is the fact that maybe what we could do today to keep you in line and keep you going is authorize five grand at your request. And then maybe you come back in, say, I don't know, May or June or July and ask for the rest of it. And then we can get an update on how many folks you've helped, how it's working out. You know, if you're still here, that kinda stuff. And then the other question that he had is, is this gonna be an annual request every year? I'm kind of assuming it is.
Yeah, I mean, if, like you said, statistically, if it's via, you know, helping the community and, yeah, I am under the grants.gov or I have, I'm working on that and V Corp can help me, you know, with that too. So it's nice to get some help if it's available. You know, I don't wanna ask for more than, I'm not, and I don't know if all that I think I might letter is on there or what I do spend, but it's been hard, I guess, paying it out of my other funds or my other jobs essentially, just loans. And then it would be nice to have some help if it's available, essentially so that I can keep going to help other people too that don't have the funds to, what are some of these other bigger places?
I think, I think a few of my questions were kinda entered in this V Corp. The couple of things that sticks, that stands out to me is essentially they are endorsing your program. And what we have in this group, I don't happen to know Shelley Hitt, the Commanded Project Coordinator, but I do know our, our own Skip Clapp who endorsed that as well as Sylvia Ryan. And so I do know, I mean, I, you have credible references of, in my opinion, support for your program. So that was where I was coming, make sure that that money that we're getting goes to intended, you know.
Makes sense, Mr. Chairman? Yeah, it makes absolute sense. I think the issue is, do you wanna do the full ten thousand now or do you wanna do half it now? And then have a, meet with her in four or six months or whatever and talk about the rest?
I would, I would say that based on this, V Corp, I'm, I'm comfortable.
Good with the ten?
I, I am, just because I think that's.
Split it.
Kind of a foundation for her program, which gives her a little bit of a leg up probably getting going. I.
I think because this is new and there's been so many requests for these funding mechanisms. First of all, I still don't have a comfort level that we know everyone in the community that's gonna be providing these types of services and how they collaborate. And so I think that having maybe a six-month window to actually establish and provide more documentation and more, you know, just how is this return on our investment, you know, happening with all of these funds? I just think it's an unknown right now and I just feel uncomfortable just giving ten thousand dollars when we, we have very little background. I'm not familiar with this at all, so.
Go ahead.
Commissioners, that's why we also decided to set up another process of requiring or, or it's not really a requirement, but encouraging V Corp to provide a letter of support when individuals are coming to the commissioners for the opioid settlement dollars. As the V Corp group is an established committee in our area, we felt that it would be wise to include them when there were requests being made to the commissioners for the opioid settlement funds.
So are you considering them the clearinghouse then for these?
Not necessarily the clearinghouse, but at least the initial review of the requests. If, if they, if it can't pass the smell test of it passing through V Corp to present then to the commissioners, then it probably shouldn't be advancing any further is kind of what our thoughts were, what my thoughts were, as well as the V Corp committee. I did have a conversation with them last week. And we developed this process to assist the commissioners in making a decision. When there are multiple requests coming before the commissioners for the opioid settlement funds, we felt that just for your comfort level, they should be at least reviewing the initial requests.
And I appreciate that information because that wasn't something we had prior.
You hadn't had that prior till right now.
So if they're gonna be reviewing all the applications and somehow solidifying this process or not just giving out funds.
Right.
To whoever.
That's what we're trying to do, commissioners, and I apologize that I did not include you in that thought process of.
And that, that was pretty, it was really informative with that letter in V Corp, so that kinda.
Well, now that I know that they're actually gonna be reviewing all of them, that does make a little bit of a decision, so.
Well, my feeling is if Courtney can say one person is worth all the money.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
You know, I mean, it's a, it's a new thing that we're all kinda, gonna have to start going through and we need to build the program. And I think it's a great opportunity for both us and for Courtney because we need that MAP provider. Need that person right now and she's able to do that. So I think we should support her. Courtney, I can tell you though, ten thousand is a lot of money just to get somebody and you hope like heck they stay in business all year. So please know that we'll be watching this. And I still would like some kind of a quarterly or a semi-annual update on how many folks you've helped and.
Doug has more information.
Commissioners, not only, that's a requirement. That, that's not an option. That's a requirement that I have to report to through the Attorney General's Office. Courtney is very aware of, of the requirement. And I have requested if the commissioners approve the contribution, that it be a quarterly report to us so that the commissioners have that information. But just to clarify, it's not an option. It is a requirement that we report once a year the financial expenditures that have been made within that fiscal year.
So the clerk's office then is actually gonna consolidate all of this, compile it into one area. So we know exactly how much is coming in, who's receiving it and how are they impacting the opioid.
Mr. Moppen, that is act, that is an accurate.
Much better, Doug.
Representation of what needs to be occurring. And I apologize too because we're so new about these requests being made. I felt that we need to develop some sort of system instead of everyone out of the woodwork coming and asking for this money. So what we just recently did, I said, hey, let's see if V Corp would be willing to provide a letter of support for these individuals making the requests so the commissioners have a, a better comfort level, so.
Somebody's compiling how much is going out the door and how much is gonna be coming in so we know.
It's a requirement.
Okay, I appreciate that. Okay, I appreciate that information.
Sorry that I did not make that clear.
That's good. Anyway, it, it actually.
You know, there is a process in place now for review of this, but.
Courtney, do you have anything you want to add before we make our motion?
No, thank you for having me, Mr. Chairman.
So what's your pleasure?
I'd make a motion, Mr. Chairman, based on our information we had here and supported before that we approved this initial request. And I like the idea that we've got the follow-up, the tracking program in place for that. I'll make that motion.
Hey, before you second or I second, Doug, I had a question for you. Is she going to put in a claim for all 10,000 or is she going to claim bills against it or how's that going to work?
What we would respectfully ask commissioners is that she submit an invoice for the full 10,000. We provide her with that $10,000 and then she provide an accurate account of those expenditures when they're made on a quarterly basis.
Give us a case, give us a caseload.
Correct. And how the monies were spent and how they were spent with, within the, the sidebars that were established by the Idaho Attorney General's Office. Miss Hill, Ignite Idaho, and The Rock all have those guidelines. They've been provided those guidelines. Miss Hill did provide, highlighted the areas that are allowable under that agreement and the commissioners have that too, just for clarification.
Hey, we got a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second it. I think our process needs to work however, and, and you know, that there's proof behind it that our process is working, so.
Well, and, and I think Courtney knows all the HIPAA rules as far as we don't want people's names. We don't want any of their personal stuff. We just want, you know, account numbers and how many folks you've helped and counseled and how many are on meth drugs and all that kind of stuff. Okay, we got a motion and a second. Any more discussion? Yes, Doug.
Commissioners, I just want to let you know that right now on hand, Valley County has 38,000, I have it up there, but $38,000 in opioid settlement that has not been allocated. We also received an email from the Attorney General's Office that there are five additional pharmaceutical companies that Idaho is going to be settling with. That Valley County wants to sign on to those. Just wanted to give you that insight. Right now we have 38,000. If this expense is made, then it would take us down to 28,000 in opioid settlement specific funds.
And I guess before we vote on it, Doug, I would really like to make sure that we know the plan as we move forward. Because when you're talking about those kind of funding mechanisms, I mean, we don't know what that final dollar is. But if we have five people providing these types of services, you know, we could be giving out a large amount of funding. I want to know what the plan is, what the collaboration is in Valley County to make sure we're covering these individuals, but that we're doing it collaboratively and not separately.
I can say, if you can see what we're doing right now or what the commissioners are doing right now, it's definitely collaboratively. You have a contribution of 35,000 being made to The Rock. You have the contribution made to Ignite. You have the contribution made to Courtney Hill, the potential contribution to Courtney Hill. All of them do work collaboratively if that's what you're asking for.
That's what I'm asking, yeah. I just want to make sure that it's, it's. If V Corp is going to be the one that researches and reviews all of this, we need to be able to hold them accountable to some point in saying, we are accepting your recognition. We're accepting your advice on this. And so they need to make sure that they're, they have a plan in place and that we are all on the same path as far as they understand.
I don't know if they have a specific plan in place. I think the, the commissioners will unfortunately have to come up with the, the official plan, right? I was just trying to create a comfort system or a comfortable, comfort system for the commissioners to approve these requests that are being made. I think what you're asking for, Commissioner Mopin, is a little bit more than what we have in place right now. Where you're wanting these groups to work collaboratively with the opioid settlement dollars.
And maybe I just need to go to a V Corp meeting and have my own conversation with them. So, or bring them in and maybe we need to do a work session together so we have something that is in place. This is how we're going to fund this. This is, you know, because it's so new, nobody even knows the funding mechanisms, what the potential is for all of this, you know? So we're handing out money before we have a full clarity on, first of all, what we're going to get. But secondly, what each one of these individuals is going to be providing.
Well, and a lot of this kind of dovetails back in the old Ingej program where a lot of folks didn't have money to go see a doctor that had an opioid addiction and so they didn't go. And so a lot of this is kind of government or county-supported funds for those people. And Courtney stated that in her letter that she subdivided it into up to $40 a visit. She's eventually going to get it so that she can get, if they have insurance, she'll get reimbursed by their insurance. But you've got to start this somewhere. And then you go back and look at, okay, we only dealt with one person all year for 10,000. That's not going to work for us. You know, we need a more efficient program, but it's, this is our program. It's how we want it to build and we got to start somewhere.
Let me, let me ask a clarifying question. Courtney is actually charging $40 per visit?
Um, I thought in the one letter.
Or is it, she's giving $40?
I might have to go back and look.
But I think from the standpoint of having some pretty clear tracks, it appears to me that we actually do. You know, with, with V Corp being as kind of like a, maybe a recommending agent in our clerk's office, keeping records. And as far as what actually.
If they have the means.
We're not specialized in that, you know? We have to just hope this, you know, not hope, but trust that because of all those different minds that are viewed, that reviewed this, that the right thing is happening.
You know me better than that by now. Trust but verify.
Anyway, I don't want to, I don't want to hold it up.
Well, I think this is great and I'm glad there's somebody stepping up to provide these services. And I appreciate that, Courtney. That means a lot because I know how it's worked in the past and how successful it was. And then, like you said, we lost our provider and things kind of went backwards for a while, so. Anyway, we're out of time. We have a motion, a second on the floor to authorize 10,000 for Miss Hill to use for this treatment. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye, my motion carries. So as Doug mentioned, Courtney, you'll have to put in a claim, Doug, and you can come down here to the courthouse and get a claim form at the clerk's office. Fill it out, hand it right back, and they'll get you on the bill paying calendar and next two weeks we'll, if it's on the bill paying, we'll get you that money and you can go to work.
And in our clerk's line, you probably don't need to come down here to get that.
So we'll submit an invoice to you via email.
There you go. You can do it electronically.
Okay.
All right.
Chairman, thank you.
Thanks for the information.
Have a great day. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you for the work you're doing. Okay, before we move on, Gabby, do you have something that you wanted to talk about?
She's on the agenda here. Does the childcare.
Oh, the childcare, okay. So then we're going to go ahead and move on down to our agenda. Our next item is an action item. These are the meeting minutes of December 19th and they look great to me.
I move that we approve the meeting minutes of December 19th.
A second. Would you second all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Next agenda item is an action item. This is sign the reimbursement and closeout form for the rec grant.
I didn't see any.
You have that, Doug?
I have it here. If you don't, it was in your packet.
You have it?
It was in our packet.
It was, yes. So first I wanted to introduce you guys to Kenzie if you hadn't met her.
So it's Kenzie, not Mackenzie?
It's officially Mackenzie, but you can call Mackenzie.
Kenzie, okay. Keep her and Mackenzie separate.
Yeah, exactly.
Okay.
So today we have three items on the agenda. The first one was the request you guys to sign the reimbursement closeout for the Wellington warming hut repairs for the, the grant with the Recreation Department. I have that here for you.
Hey, can you bring it up? Gabby, so we can just look at it real quick? Please.
Didn't see it and I didn't see any issues with it.
We had this. Yeah, I seen this. Okay, so we need a motion to approve the closeout report for the Wellington hut repair.
I might get motion, Mr. Chairman.
A second.
Move to second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Hey, our next agenda item is also an action item. This is MOU with YCAP on.
Yeah, so as you know, we're working on a grant to remodel this senior center to put daycare in half of it. So part of the grant was we needed an MOU with YCAP. We sent it to Oki last week and he on Friday requested or recommended that we remove a little section from it with the liabilities. So I have an updated copy.
The one I got was blank.
I'm not finding it.
There's nothing.
The attachment was blank?
Yeah.
WICAP?
It's the YCAP MOU, but there's nothing on it.
Nothing there.
Yeah, that's strange. Okay, I sent you the wrong one and I hope this. I only had two copies, so I'll share with you.
Here's this one, Gabby.
Thank you.
Let me look at this real quick. And if I remember, you were pulling out the liability, YCAP is going to cover all that. Is that right?
Yes, there was a section that we pulled out.
Where did I see that? I thought I saw that. Yeah, it's down here on the liability.
So the way that that, all of the liability on that was written is that nobody had any responsibility for anything. So it was basically saying that they weren't going to accept liability and the county isn't going to accept liability. So Oki said just remove it. So we did. Does that make sense?
Yeah, the one that Gabby sent us is YCAP shall identify defendants, say harmless, collaborate, agents, officers, agents, okay? That's what was confusing to me.
Yeah, and so it basically said nobody would do anything, so we just removed that. I suspect when we get closer to the, getting the daycare actually in place, we'll have to do a contract, an official contract with them. So this is what we're doing with this is just so we can get something in the grant.
And I'm assuming Pat or Gabby, the adequate building also includes remodeling and all those costs. Everybody good with this?
Yes, sir.
What? Okay, so we need a motion to approve.
I move to approve and sign the MOU with YCAP.
I'll second that.
Would you second all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. So while I'm signing this, perhaps, Kenzie, you could tell us a little about everything, your life and world in general?
Loaded question.
It is.
Well, I just started here. I'm about a month in, so I haven't met you two. I have an update. I'm originally from Montana. I moved down here to go to BSU. I graduated in 2015 and then I had four kids.
Goodness, you're a busy girl.
I love it. Then I became a real estate agent, so I'm still, I still have my license with Cascade Lake Realty, but it's just not fulfilling really. So I found this job.
I understand. I've done it for 27 years. I understand.
Really? Oh, my goodness.
Go on, I'm interrupting you.
Oh, no, you're good. That's, that's interesting. Did you, were you with Cascade Lake Realty?
No, my RE/MAX.
Oh, nice. Um, yeah. Now I'm here and I'm loving it. I feel like I'm making a difference or I have the ability to bring change to our community, which is really nice.
Well, I tell you what, you bit off a big chunk to replace Mary who was there before, but I'm sure you're going to do fine.
Yeah.
There's a lot of grants.
I know. Yeah, we're making good headway though. There was definitely a learning curve at first, but now I'm starting to get a hang of it and I think I'm.
No, we haven't sent you any of the grant information lately. We're giving you a, a break. We're giving you a learning opportunity.
Oh, wow.
There's lots of money out there right now.
Well, I, as chairman, you get a lot of those grants and they don't send it to anybody else. They send it to me and so I forwarded it to Mr. Miller and he's supposed to get it to you. But I mean, there's one or two a week, it seems like, and it's like, oh my gosh, there's no way I can keep up with all this. So I appreciate your help.
Are you giving her all the NACO grants? Oh, so maybe you are getting them.
She's getting a lot of them.
I think so. I mean, I have like six grants right now that I'm working on that are due within next month.
Awesome.
I think I got a good chunk of them.
So Mary had provided to us just so we could kind of keep up on who is applying, a spreadsheet.
Yeah.
That actually, and maybe you have that, I don't know. But getting something maybe monthly in a packet somewhere that says these are the grants we're working on, the departments we're working on, how much they're for, you know, you know, how much we've been given is very helpful to me. So I kind of know what your focus is and, you know, kind of what returns the county is getting, so.
Yeah, I would be happy to provide that.
That'd be awesome.
Updating it as they go.
Well, and on top of that too, sometimes there's people around here that are a little obstreperous as far as helping you out with information that you need for a grant. If you let Doug know, he'll let us know and we'll, we'll. Okay? Because that's going to be an issue, but.
I do CC Doug on a lot of my emails so that I, they know like I got someone.
Great, well, welcome.
Thank you.
And, and two days a week, hopefully we'll run into you more now. We know who you are.
Yeah.
Let everybody go back to work.
We just need approval to submit our grant. The last thing on the agenda was for us to get permission to actually.
I thought it was all one.
Yep, yep. So the MOU is part of the grant, but we also need permission to actually submit. It's due on the first of January.
Gabby, on this one, it still had Mary Rosen's name on there.
As the applicant.
You need to do that, but also the funding request it showed zero. So we need to get that updated before you put it in.
Oop.
Okay, yep, we'll get all that updated.
I haven't already done that yet.
We hadn't decided how much we were going for because we were just waiting for Scott to get back to us on how much he thinks the remodel is going to cost. And he ballparked between 350 and 400,000 for the remodel. And then on top of that, we can also do first year expenses. So we're asking for.
This has gone into WDC, right? For Forest Development Council? This is their grant?
Yes.
Okay, so I think we have 500,000 max on each grant? Is that correct? Might even be higher than that.
We didn't see a match.
I thought it was like one, five.
Okay.
Yeah, it was 50% match.
Yeah, so we're requesting 643,000, but we, and we had to have half match, but our, the value of the building is that in-kind donation, so we have that.
And then your guys are also working with the school for the playground equipment and that kind of stuff.
The school gave us a letter of support saying that, you know, that they're in on helping with this project, but there's been no clear definition of what they're going to do yet at this point.
So Scott's final number, you said it was 350,000.
The 400,000, so we went on a little higher.
Does that include all the outside fencing and all that?
That's correct, yeah.
Okay.
And Elmacall got 366 and Amrock got 166. So there's been a large investment in this area up here just because of the need that we have. I'm really excited to see this.
And thanks, Gabby, for pushing this, you and Pat both.
Worked group effort.
We're getting there slowly but steadily. It's great. So we have, this is an action item. I need a motion to approve the submission for this childcare grant.
I would love to do that one.
You can do that.
I feel, I feel engaged with this conversation. I would like to approve the submission of the childcare expansion grant for the WDC.
We moved in second, so are there times when you don't feel engaged?
Not on many subjects.
You left that one wide open.
I did, you're right.
We got a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
Thank you.
So that is the end of the agenda for this morning's session. We will adjourn and see you when we're back here at 1:00.